Okay, Tim.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Plastow Planning Board meeting of March 17th, 2021. The Plastow Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with governance of the new emergency order number 12 pursuant to the executive order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. When there are a public hearing scheduled, notice of electronic meeting sent to all abutters and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. Plastow Planning Board is utilizing Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom program, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting. The link to access this meeting is provided on the town's website. There is a raise your hand feature of the program that will allow attendees to participate in the discussion. There is also a Q&amp;A box for the public to type questions during the meeting. Public can also send emails with questions or concerns prior to the meeting to degoss@plastow.com. All emails received by 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting will be read at the meeting. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q&amp;A box or sent via email will be read aloud to become part of the public record. The meeting will also be live on Plastow Access Cable, Channel 17, and will be livestreamed on the town's website. So with that notice given, we will move on to the roll call. Charlene, please.
You bet. Okay, Tim Moore?
Here, at home and alone.
Lori Millet?
Yeah.
Karen Robinson?
Yeah.
Tom Alberti?
Here.
I don't see Jeff Adams. Anybody hear from him?
He's there.
Oh, just walked in. There we go. We also have Maxan Dobson here and Devois.
Greg Tallon, a voting member from the--
Greg, you're not on this one. Sorry about that.
Oh, I have to update it because I didn't know when I published it.
And I'm looking right at you. I'm just not here. And Greg Tallon.
That's it. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is review and approval of the February 17th 21 minutes. Is there a motion on those minutes?
I'll move.
You have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll call for a roll call vote then. Charlene?
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yeah.
Tom Alberti?
Yes.
Greg Tallon?
Abstain.
That's it. Those are the voting members.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is reorganization, and this occurs every year after new members have been appointed. Congratulations to Tom, who was--
Thank you.
--elected as a regular member. The top nominations for the chair.
I nominate Tim Moore as chair.
Dave, is there a second?
Can I make a second?
I guess you can second as well.
I think only the voting members can--
Right.
All right, are there any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Tom Alberti.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? All right, I'm hearing none. We'll close the nominations and we'll vote. So we need to do a roll call vote. When your name is called, state the candidate that you are voting for, and we'll count the votes at the end.
Okay. Tim Moore?
Tim Moore.
Okay. Lori Millet?
Tom Alberti.
Karen Robinson?
Tom Alberti.
Tom Alberti?
Tom Alberti.
Greg Tallon?
Tim Moore.
Okay, so the vote stands three for Tom Alberti, two for Tim Moore. So, Tom, congratulations.
You got a place in style.
Thank you.
There is a chair. So I guess we can proceed in one of two manners, and turn the gavel over to Tom right now, or we can finish the business of this meeting and let Tom start with the next meeting. Doesn't matter to me. It's kind of hard to jump into the middle of something, but it's--
Yeah, I mean, you know, I appreciate the support. You know, I've got a lot of experience running meetings, and I would like to take that and move forward with this. But on a procedural basis, I certainly welcome the input. Obviously, there's a lot of experience and knowledge throughout this board, so I'm going to ask for your assistance and support throughout this process. But does anybody have a recommendation on what they think procedurally is the best avenue?
I don't think it really makes too much difference. I think over the years, we've probably done it both ways.
Okay. I would welcome the opportunity just to take the gavel from this point and proceed.
Sure, it's fine.
Okay. All right. So next, we have vice chair nominations. Would someone like to nominate? Anyone? Lori?
I'd like to nominate Tim Moore as vice chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Greg Tallon. Charlene, roll call, please.
Well, are there any other nominations?
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
Okay. Tim Moore?
Tim Moore?
Well, yes or no, I guess.
Yeah, I guess if there's just one, yeah, yes would be the right answer.
Lori Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Tom Alberti?
Yes.
Greg Tallon?
Yes.
Very good. Then that was 5-0-0.
Excellent. Great. Next on the agenda are committee assignments. And if I read this correctly, we have two active committees at this time. One is the Capital Improvements Committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, as far as the Capital Improvements Committee go, who was serving on that in the prior term?
Well, it's a one-year term, and our bylaws state that the chair of the planning board also chairs the CIP committee unless, as Jim did last year, he delegated that to me. So the planning board has two members on the CIP. The Board of Selectmen have two members, and the Budget Committee has two members. So it's those six people that get together and put together the CIP.
And an alternate from each of those boards.
Oh, right, Dee, good.
Well, we had Budget Committee, we only had one member and one alternate. It wasn't two Budget Committee members.
No, there were two.
Well, I know it was Bob Zukas and Bob Hamilton, but one of them was like an alternate.
No, we had you listed as the alternate and Bob and Bob as the primary members.
Okay.
And if I can ask who the members were from the planning board?
It was Tim Moore--
Okay.
--and Jim Peck, and I believe Jeff was the alternate.
Okay. We still have to consider Jeff's reappointment, so for now, I'm going to ask Tim, are you willing to continue on the Capital Improvement Committee?
AM, yes.
Okay, and I will as well. And then we can-- would anybody else like to be an alternate on that committee? Okay. Jeff, we will note that, and after we look at your reappointment, we will confirm that. Okay. Next is the Rockingham Planning Commission recommendations. Tim, if I recall, you were also on that committee. Is that correct?
Yep. The RPC terms are four years, so I believe last year I was appointed. So the deal with the RPC is the planning board makes recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, and they ultimately appoint a member to the RPC. So last year, the planning board's recommendation were for myself and Greg Tallon as an alternate. The planning board of Selectmen approved those. This year, Julian Kishka's term is up. I talked to Julian, I guess, a couple weeks ago now. He is willing to serve again as an RPC commissioner, but it's up to, you know, the planning board and the Board of Selectmen to ultimately make that. I will say, on Julian's behalf, he has attended, I don't know, at least 85, 90% of the meetings, which are basically monthly on the second Wednesday of the month, has been a good participant and good representative from Plastow, I think. So I would recommend that we reappoint, or I guess I recommend that the planning board recommends Julian to serve another four-year term as the--
And that's independent of his role as the Board of Selectmen, correct?
He's no longer--
Yeah, he's no longer--
Which he is no longer, yeah.
No longer there.
Yep. The only requirement for an RPC commissioner is that they be a resident of the town. They don't have to be any kind of town official.
Will we do a roll call on this? Go ahead, Max.
Do the people of Plastow know that that's a position that they can hold? I've never seen it really advertised on the website or anything like that.
Yeah, that's a question. That's a good question.
No, I've never seen it either.
Dee, do you know if the Rockingham Planning Commission is advertised on our website whatsoever? That opportunity, that appointment?
It's not a committee--
I don't know.
Yeah, it's not a committee of the town--
It's not a committee of the town.
Okay.
Or a board of the town, so it would not be on the website.
Okay.
It should have representation to the Rockingham Planning Commission from the town.
Sure. As a board, are we going to recommend-- do we do a roll call vote on that for Julian?
Can you do that?
Yeah, it should be in the form of a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend Julian Kishka as the RPC representative for Plastow along with Tim Moore.
I'll second the motion.
You only have to do the one.
Okay.
Mr. Moore and Mr. Tallon are until 2024, I believe.
Oh, okay.
They're four-year terms.
Just Julian.
Yeah.
Second the motion.
Okay. Charlene, roll call, please.
Okay, hold on a moment. All right, Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Tom Alberti?
Yes.
Greg Tallon?
Yes.
Okay. 5-0-0.
Okay. Moving along. All right. Next is to look at the alternate member reappointment of Jeff Adams as a board. We need to vote on that. Is that correct? Do I have a motion to--
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Jeff Adams as an alternate member of the planning board.
Do we have a second?
Yep, I'll second.
Okay. Charlene, roll call.
Yep. Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Millet?
No.
Karen Robinson?
No.
Tom Alberti?
I will abstain.
Greg Tallon?
Yes.
It's a split vote.
Motion does not pass.
2-2-1, motion does not pass.
Does not pass. You have to have more yeses than nos.
Okay. All right. So at this time, Jeff's reappointment does not pass motion. Procedurally, are we thanking Jeff for his service at this time?
Well, we certainly should. Jeff has been a long-serving alternate. Has been to, again, almost every meeting, you know, as regular as any regular member, and he's been doing it now for--
Twelve years.
I don't know, quite a while. I would guess 10 years or more. He always has good comments, some from a different perspective, but say he's made a valuable contribution. We'll miss his participation.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff, thank you very much. I did not have much time to serve with you, but thank you for your service to the town. We much appreciate it. Certainly free to provide input, just as all the public always is. So thank you very much. Okay. So at this time, we'll move to old business. Yeah, I didn't think so. That's good. And new business. All right. So we received a letter from the Board of Selectmen and the town manager, correct, representing the-- I'll read the letter. "Plastow Board of Selectmen is considering selling two town-owned properties. Properties are 13 Rose Avenue and 17 Canterbury Forest. In accordance with RSA 4114-A, this letter is to notify you regarding the possible sale and ask if you have any input." So the Board of Selectmen did hold a public hearing, and per RSA, they looked for our input. I believe that our recommendation is only advisory at this point. They will make the final determination if the sale is to be held. The first of the two properties is Rose Avenue, okay, 13 Rose Avenue. Does anybody have any input on this? Have you looked at this property? It's behind center auto body. It's, I think, on the backside, might have bought the high school's land, if I have that correct, at least by the back of the fields. That is zoned as C1. There's currently a residential home on that property. It is grandfathered in, for lack of a better term, and I believe that the land was deeded to the town. So at this time, does anybody have any conversation or communication about this property?
I would say, since there's already a residence on it, it's already developed land, that our recommendation would be to sell it.
Yes.
Is there any reason or purpose that this particular property is up for? Is there a plan for it already?
I think it boils down to the town doesn't want to be a landlord, so we either sell it, or we rent it, or it lays fallow. This puts it back on the tax rules.
You know, I have one question, and I wanted to ask this. The town of-- the sale of town-owned property, the funds that come from that, do those go into the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's unassigned at that point? Okay. How frequently do we see sale of town-owned property?
Not very frequently.
Yeah?
Very rarely.
Okay. You know, we could get some input from the Board of Selectmen and the town manager as to what the, you know, basis for the sale is, but--
What is it?
As a board, I believe ours is simply advisory. Does anybody want to put a motion forth on a recommendation, yes or no?
I'll make a motion to recommend that we sell the property.
I'll second that.
Lori, seconds. Charlene, roll call.
Yep. Okay, Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
What was that?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom Alberti?
Yes.
Greg Tallon?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Yep.
Okay. Second property is 17 Canterbury Forest. That is off of Congressional, I believe. And it is also a piece of property. I do not believe there's a home on it currently.
There is not.
It's wetlands.
It is deemed wetlands?
Yep, it doesn't have a wetlands designation, but it's my understanding that it is wet.
Okay. All right. Do we have any information on the basis for that sale? Is it sort of the same?
Town doesn't have any use for the property, so--
Okay. You know, I looked at this a little bit. Does anybody else have any thoughts on this property? Go ahead, Lori.
I was just wondering how the town even acquired this. Was this also--
I believe both of these were tax-deeded.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I did a little research on it, and I found out in 2005, there was a citizens petition, Article P25, that was basically asking the people if they wanted the BOS to sell the town-owned property, specifically 17 Canterbury Forest, and the BOS was not in favor of it at that time. There were lots of amendments made at Deliberative, adding different prices, putting a date on it, more property details, and all of those motions failed. The final motion that passed to get it on the warrant was the voters wanted it added, that the voters at Deliberative were not in favor of it, and it did not pass at town meeting. So obviously, there's a reason why people don't want to give this authority to the BOS to sell this property.
Was in 2005, I believe, was the time when the town voted on property sales versus the Board of Selectmen? Karen?
That was my point, because in this case, I think also the abutters would probably agree with not doing this either, simply because there could be, and I don't know what the plan is, but there could be a way of needing this property as an in-or-out possibility to a development. And that should be a vote to the people, not a vote by a board or a group. It should be by the people, whether this should be sold.
Mr. Tallon?
I just want to add a couple of points. One, at the time when this first went on the-- to the town, there was a possibility, even though it was slight, there was a possibility that this house, this property could be developed. That has gone. It's an unbuiltable lot, and the reason why the town is interested in selling it now is there is another party that is interested in using potted land to increase the frontage, and I'm not sure which-- do you know which one it is?
No.
Yeah, I'm not sure which item it is. It might be 19, track 19, to give them a more-- so they would basically just use the land to increase the-- to make the lot that they have more buildable or more sellable. And they would basically agree not to build or put a house on that property, that 1.45 acres.
I did some research as well, and I noticed that this land abuts the 50-78 parcel, which is frontage off of 17 Harriman. Back in 2005, it looks like there was a plan. Wasn't approved. I don't know if it was submitted, but it was written up. Shows for some development, cutting a road through some--
Cutting a road.
Some-- right through some houses in the lot, and then to develop behind that area. So I'm not sure if the request from anybody that is interested in this parcel land relates to the potential development of that property. Go ahead, Lori.
I thought I heard it said from the town manager that the owner, or the new owner of the property on Harriman, approached the town about buying this parcel--
Yep.
--that they were going to be building houses on Harriman. So that, to me, that's the reason why this is on. I don't think the Board of Selectmen just decided to sell this. I think it was because of the owner on Harriman approached the town.
Yeah, and I wonder if that opens up the possibility to--
Give a vote to the people.
Bring a road through there, or something along those lines. Yes, Max?
I was just going to say, if that is the case, and that opens Pandora's Box for this road, now is it going to be a town road? Is it private road? Are the people going to have to pay for it to be paved and plowed? So it really should go before the people if that's the ultimate plan for this parcel.
Just to let you know, the voters did, and I can't quote to the year, and I'm sorry that I can't, the voters did give that responsibility over to the Board of Selectmen. So even if you recommended it go to a vote, they don't have to take it to the vote of the people because the people have bestowed them the authority to buy and sell property on behalf of the town.
Was that after 2005?
Yes, relatively recent.
I think it was 2014 that it happened.
It sounds about right.
Yes.
Do you think that it was just a matter of, you know, we weren't selling a whole lot of property, and was merely procedural to say, hey, the Board of Selectmen can handle that. They already represented us on other matters?
Probably.
Yeah.
I think that's like the logic with a lot of the, like, you want the Board of Selectmen to be the fiduciaries on these different capital reserves. It's kind of just a housekeeping thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing my thought was, you know, with the Rose Ave property, I didn't see any reason why there should be an issue with that, in terms of my opinion. This one seems like it has some more to it. And so, for that reason, I did have these similar concerns to you, and I did research it, as you guys did as well. Does anybody else have any more feedback, or would we like to get to a roll call or a motion to recommend or not?
This is Tim. Yep, the lot itself is not buildable, otherwise it'd already be a house on it. It's come up several times before in lists of properties the town might sell. This one has always been recommended not to sell for some of the reasons that we've heard here again tonight. And the concern would be if that lot behind the Canterbury Forest lot does get developed. And although, I guess the proposal that they discussed with Mark, they were going to use Canterbury Forest lot only for frontage, but it still seems like that's opening up Pandora's Box. Now, I don't know if there is some kind of deed restriction that we could put on the property that would say no driveway or public right of access be developed on that lot. If that was a possibility, then I think that would alleviate my concerns.
Yeah, I think since we are advisory in this vote, that we can only recommend conditions, and ultimately, the Board of Selectmen can choose whether or not to follow those recommendations. But yeah, that's a good point. Max?
I just had a question. Maybe Tim can answer it. Since this is considered wet, but it's not deemed a wetland, how does a property get that kind of classification? What is it, Conservation Committee?
Yes, they will be in it.
Well, the-- I mean, there must be some wet areas, otherwise it would be buildable. And I did notice that there was a drainage easement through there. I don't know what the elevations are, so I don't know if that's draining away from Canterbury Forest into the back parcel, or if it's draining in the other direction. other direction, or, or just what. It might be that it's in there just to prevent flooding into the abutting property on Canterbury Forest. I'm not, I'm not sure. But I do know that it's, it is not buildable for whatever reasons, and it must be that there's not enough uplands.
Tim, if someone acquired that parcel and, you know, deemed that they wanted to try to do something, they would obviously submit a plan, it would have to get surveyed, is that correct? And they, if they determined that it is wetlands, they'd have to ask for variances, or, you know, you know, some sort of relief if, if they wanted to move forward with some sort of development. And could they put a road through there?
Well, if there are no restrictions, you know, you can always come up with a plan and apply for variances, or waivers, or whatever, to make the plan work. Certainly no guarantee that those would be granted.
Yeah, I think by- Go ahead, Lori.
I was just going to ask Tim a question. Tim, has Concom talked about this yet?
They have, and they voted not to sell, because of the weapons.
Canterbury Forest?
Yep.
Okay.
And is that relative to simply that, that lot? Or are they concerned about the, the larger potential option, you know, development opportunity?
Well, there's, the lot, the back lot has some wetlands as well. I'm not, not sure if they're connected or not. But just the Canterbury Forest lot itself, with the wetlands and the drainage easement, was enough for the Conservation Commission to recommend not to sell.
Okay. Yeah, I think that if we knew what the, the ultimate plan was, we could recommend some conditions, but because that is such a, you know, a wild card at this point, I think that that's a challenge. I think that if there's any more comments, please add it now, otherwise I think we can motion to either recommend or not. Would someone like to put a motion to-
I'll make a motion that we not recommend the sale of 17 Canterbury Forest.
I'll second it.
Okay. Charlene, roll call.
Where's my list?
What should I, do I, sorry, I'm sorry. Do I need to make the motion in the positive, and then we say no, or do we, does that be clearer?
Make it a positive, if you can.
Okay, can I, can I withdraw that motion?
What's, what's your thought? I was thinking the same exact thing. Do we say?
Yes.
I just don't want it to be confused.
Motion to recommend and then say no, or motion to rock and not recommend and say yes, or vice versa?
I think we should put it in the positive and then say no.
I think you're right.
I'm okay with that. We can make sure that's very clear.
Did you second it?
Yes.
So-
You withdrew your second?
Yep.
Okay.
Please submit your remotion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we recommend to the board of selectmen for the sale of 17 Canterbury Forest.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Charlene, roll call. So this is a vote to recommend the sale.
Right.
Right, okay. Tim Moore.
No, no.
Lori Millet.
No.
Karen Robinson.
No.
Tom Alberti.
No.
Greg Tallon.
Abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
It doesn't pass.
401, not recommend.
Nope, 041.
041, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for keeping me on track. That's the kind of thing I'll need. Okay.
Did you do it for Rose? Did you make?
So, I'm sorry?
Did you make a motion for Rose yet? No.
We did.
Rose Avenue's already done.
Good, okay, okay.
You'd recommend that.
We recommend.
You voted yes on that one.
Pardon me?
You voted yes on that one.
Okay.
Would that have been a recommendation for abstention?
Then I would have been abstaining, right.
Is that something we revisit, or?
Wait a minute, he abstained.
No.
He voted yes on Rose Avenue, but because this is a board of selectmen recommendation.
But as a, a selectman, as a planning board member, doesn't have to vote the will of the board of selectmen, they can make their own vote-
Okay.
-as a planning board member.
All right.
This particular issue is a recommendation to the board of selectmen, and that's the reason why I abstained it. Do I have permission to change my vote to abstain for the Rose Avenue?
No, 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 I'm just saying that, because sometime, because you know how with the Budget Committee, it's you vote the will of the-
Correct, right.
A planning board.
Right, but I'm basically, this is a motion to recommend to the board of selectmen, so I'm not recommending, I don't want, I want to stay neutral.
Right.
I want to listen to what you guys have to say-
Right.
-and take that back to the board of selectmen and let them make their decision. And that's the reason why I felt that for these two things-
Yeah, and although this is simply an advisory, you know, vote, I think that, you know, if he felt comfortable putting a motion forth, and someone else agreed with it, we could revote that Rose Avenue.
I'll make a motion that we revisit the Rose Ave.
Second.
Okay. Charlene, can you roll call on Rose Avenue? This is to approve-
Recommend the sale.
Recommend the sale of Rose Avenue. Thank you, Dee.
Tim Moore.
Yes.
Lori Millet.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Tom Alberti.
Yes.
Greg Tallon.
Abstain. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right, moving along. Communications, updates, FYI's and other business. I think this is the point where Dee is on the spotlight.
None of the above.
None of the above.
None of the above, I have nothing to provide you this time.
Am I going to, as chair, am I going to have one of the quickest meetings that we've had in many moons?
You're still going to be hard pressed to beat the three-minute meeting.
So, the only thing I would say is, what do we have for a calendar this month? Today is the second Wednesday.
Next meeting is April 7th.
Okay.
And you have the continuation of 44 Sweet Hill Road that night.
Okay. Typically, the first meeting is for-
Workshop.
Workshop. Second is for applications, but we did agree to hear that.
Yep.
Okay.
Because they would have actually have come in tonight, but because John wasn't going to be here-
That's correct.
They agreed to continue to the 7th.
Okay. Does anybody else, is, my understanding is that-
I have no additional applications that have come in.
Excellent, okay, thank you. My understanding is that Kingston Planning Board voted on the warehouse space up on 125.
Yeah, I did hear about that.
That is a project under the RPC, and it's that mystery buyer, which right, right now, it's the old Sears complex. I believe that's about 125,000 square feet, plus office space. This new proposal is something in the range of 850,000 square feet, so that's a monster of warehouse. The RPC is also advisory in that capacity. They, they brought up two concerns. One was water, the impact to the drinking water and surrounding wetlands, as well as the impact to traffic, mainly on 125, and I would assume 101. And that's where I think that Plastow has some concern, which is, what is this business? What is the impact if they were to drive south through town? So we don't know what the business is possibly, you know, who the possible owner is. I did read that they inquired with Amazon, and Amazon said no, but that's probably a canned statement. They probably don't speak about future projects publicly until it's official. So my question to Tim, as in a budding town, what role will we play if that project continues to move forward? It certainly is something to keep our eyes on.
Yeah, I mean, we're in a budding town, but we're not, you know, we're not a, not a direct abutter. So I would say that we certainly would be interested in reviewing traffic study at, at the developer's expense. So we would have, I guess, Keach review it for us, or if there's some other consulting traffic firm that we think might be a little more in tune, that we'd be allowed to do that, again, at the developer, Kingston Development's expense. And I think really, that's, you know, I think that's really only our, only, our only direct impact on the, on the development, is, is the traffic.
The, my understanding was that the planning board voted four to one, one against, four, four, to accept the application, so that one will move forward. So we'll keep our eyes on that.
No, they already voted to approve.
Oh, to approve, yeah, that's correct.
Oh, oh.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'll have to read it again. I don't know if it was just to accept the application or to approve the project, but-
That would be a quick approval.
Yeah, I, I, I assume it's just to accept the application.
I believe it was approved.
I don't get notices of their decisions.
Yeah. Okay, we'll keep an eye on that.
It might be on their website.
Yeah, I would assume it was, would be to approve, because they wouldn't have asked the planning commission to give an opinion about the impact on regional development if they hadn't already accepted jurisdiction of the plan, so.
That's true.
I would guess that that vote was to approve. But, I mean, again, I'm not-
That was quick.
Can't be certain.
Very quick.
Does anybody have any other questions, or points of discussion?
I'm going to add to that, that I forget where I heard the discussion, but they were saying that the developers were saying that the vehicular traffic would not be coming from the south side, that they were going to be, quote, instructing the suppliers to come in from the 101 direction. And that was one of their main arguments, is it not impacting anybody south, i.e. us.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the location, it's up by that Brentwood DMV.
It's by the Registry of Deeds.
Yeah, Registry of Deeds. So, you know, it's a lot closer to 101 than it is to 125, and of course, having to go through Plastow, but there could be some peripheral, peripheral traffic that, you know, if it's local.
Don't you wear their head?
My guess is that it's a distribution-centered, though, it's going to be off-hour traffic, for the most part.
Yep. All right.
That's not to say that it wouldn't be, you know, regular day traffic, but probably most of it would be off-hour, commuter hours.
Even any additional daily traffic would probably be warehouse, the workers in the building, not the truck traffic itself.
Dee, I, you know, I just thought of one other thing. I, at the, I understand that someone did approach the town, and I don't know if we can publicly speak about it at this point, about some warehouse space on 125?
Not that I've been contacted for.
Okay. I believe they were directed maybe to speak with John, so John maybe share, be able to share some information at our next meeting. Any other questions, comments?
I, I had a question. Is John Blynn going to be the alternate?
Currently.
Okay. Because-
That might, that may change.
We're checking into the connection between Concom, ZBA, board of selectmen, and the planning board to see how that all shakes out.
Okay, so what, what I did read, an RSA, that you can only have one planning board member on Concom, so I know John is also, Tim and John are both on Concom.
Good point.
I don't know if that applies to ex officios.
Right, for members it does, but not for ex officios.
He's not actually a planning board member, he's the selectman's rep to the planning board. So it's a fine line, so I'm not sure if that's applied. That's why I'm contacting NHMA about it. I've sent them an email.
Okay.
All right, so Dee, you'll check in on that, you'll report back to Mr. Tallon and Mr. Blynn, and they'll be able to determine what their next steps are prior to our next meeting. Do you have a board of selectmen meeting prior to that?
There's one on the 29th.
Okay, all right.
So we, we did, we did discuss it when John recommended, John asked the, the alternate member or representative, and I, and I told him right then, I says, I think that may be an issue, we'll put your name down right now, but we will definitely research this to make sure that there is no conflict of interest, and that we're not breaking any RSA's. So right now, he is holding up, even showing up-
Okay.
-until we clear that up.
Yeah, I mean, John is the selectman's rep to the Conservation Commission?
Yep.
He is not a voting member of the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
As, as opposed to an alternate ex officio, who would be a voting member if the regular ex officio member is Bamsin.
Oh, that's-
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Tim, why isn't he a voting member, though? I don't understand what, I don't think there's anything that says he can't be on Concom.
It's the-
No, there isn't. In fact, his, his brother, Buzzing, was both a selectman and a Concom member for quite a few years, and in fact, still is a voting Concom member. So the choice was his. He would have, I guess he would have been an alternate member on Concom, because we have five already, so he would have been an alternate. But he, he just chose not to do that, so.
Okay.
The charter of the committee determines whether or not an ex officio is a voting member or not on any particular board.
Okay.
The only other thing I would point out, and I, I want to circle back, I know that I'm a newer member, but I appreciate the support. I'd really like to lean on this, this group for information and knowledge. I think that it's an exciting time to look forward. Plastow's got our water coming in, and, you know, I'd like to see what direction the town is going to go in, and what kind of impact that we can have, that, you know, the, the decisions and the, the future of development in this town, or lack of development thereof, is, is within our vision and what we have for this town. So it's, I think, going to be an interesting and exciting three years. Jim did have some, some, we did have some protocols. One of those was that if you were going to miss the meeting, to contact Jim directly. If you're okay, I can continue that, I can give you my information, and you are welcome to either email, or call, or text, and let me know if you're going to miss the meeting.
Okay.
Anything else?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Look forward to working with this group. We will close, adjourn the meeting at six-
That clock is wrong.
Okay.
It is 7:19.
I was thinking that thing, yep. We'll adjourn the meeting 7:19. Thank you.
You can adjourn it before it begins.